Greetings, Council. I just wanted to introduce a topic. As you all know, we've been uh working on efforts to expand uh homeless capacity and sheltering uh and toward that end, uh Mr. Seppeler and Tara Sandin and I had a meeting last week. And I'd like to um ask Rick and or Tara to just amplify a little bit on the content of that discussion. We had um been looking at where to put uh our various limited um staff efforts and and resources. Of course, uh there's been discussion about expanding the hot team. There's been effort put out uh relating to safe parking and tiny home villages uh. The idea of expanding motel stay vouchers, et cetera. And toward that end, I just thought I'd ask Rick to uh go into a little more detail on what we're thinking in that regard. So, Rick?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Council members. I'm joined today by Samuel Lutz and Tara Sandin is at a competing meeting. But we'll join in with us should she have time available. Um, we come before you because as council is aware, there've been a number of emergent issues regarding unsheltered community members. Um, it's come to the fore in the last couple of weeks. Um, these uh concerns based on circumstances in terms of base camp and its capacity and service to those unsheltered members have been discussed by council in a variety of forums. Um, and as a response to the issue, a number of alternatives have been discussed. Uh perhaps not as a a complete discussion, but raised as issues that have merit and should be considered further. In looking at that, um, we as staff went back and said, there is an urgent circumstance in terms of capacity right now that faces the city. Um, and there's collateral issues that come out of having inadequate capacity for those who are unsheltered uh in either shelters or other programs. Um, and we acknowledge that we have very limited resources that are available to to respond. It's a very, very challenging budget and a very, very challenging year. Allocate dollars to address it. Um, unfortunately, some of these issues have come out out of sequence with our normal consideration of our levy. Typically, uh, we will next discuss the levy in May. And we make our plan and allocate our funds. As council is aware, we have uh fully allocated our service dollars in the present levy. Um, of course, council has the right to reallocate those dollars and to put them where they see them most useful for the community. However, um, every time we reallocate at this point, it means we'll have last less projects, less physical bricks and mortars projects. Always a tough balance to strike on that. I should say, um, in consideration of the various approaches we've discussed, and I'll I'll present a matrix in just a moment of all of them. Um, they all have merit. But fundamentally, it is unlikely we can do them all right now. Um, we can step up and prepare. We need to look at it and we need to review it with a very critical eye as what is the most immediate need? So we can get rolling on that and provide relief. Um, in this case, we think it's capacity. With that, I'd like to share my screen and show you the various things, walk through it, and then we'll talk a little bit more on that. Um, the first is, uh, as Councilmember Liliquis mentioned, that is to expand the mo- uh, I'm sorry. Um, that's the second. I'll get to that in a second. The first is to expand the motel state program for families and seniors. Um, the gap is unknown at this time. And uh, we believe that it's extraordinarily high priority. We have begun conversations to talk about a permanent facility to replace that. And we understand there are dollars um are there for the winter. Um, we think that this um is one we will actively continue to advance, but a decision on that is premature at this time as we don't have all the information. And we would likely recommend revisiting it when the action plan comes to council this coming May. I just mentioned that. Uh, if that's the time, we'd look at that balance between programs, other funding we could bring in and the projects we hope to advance. And now we turn to the second approach. Um, this has been discussed in the homeless strategies work group as well as in council session. And that is to expand the homeless uh outreach team to cover weekend shifts. Um, we have received from the Opportunity Council a preliminary estimate. It has arranged depending on how adequate or how robust we wish to be of about eighty-five thousand to one hundred and fifty-five thousand for the coming year. Um, we can use our general fund or housing levy to fund this. Uh, camp council could increase that, but as noted, that would decrease our housing production. Um, there's a couple of points I'd like to uh discuss on that, and that is, um, if we did expand the service, um, it's important to know that the weekend service was desired and it came up during our discussion of base camp with many of the surrounding businesses. Um, we wouldn't have a concurrent increase in um the service facilities on the weekends. So, uh, in essence, uh, they could provide direction, they could provide supplies, but we wouldn't be able to refer anyone till the following Monday. Um, it is something that, um, ultimately, as I said, has merit. Um, however, we think at this point it might be one that we want to uh place on hold um and then revisit when there's a little greater capacity in the system because get capacity, the ability to get people off of the street and out of the woods really is our critical path, at least from the staff perspective. The third is a tiny home village. Um, that would be fifteen to twenty-five homes, um, might be a few more too, depending on the site. It's households that are assisted depending on length of stay. Um, the city would contribute land. There is a capital cost, um, and it's various depending on the proponent. Um, it could be site prep that could include brick and mortar uh facilities, or it could be temporary facilities. Similarly, the operations are entirely dependent on the operator and the efficacy of their program, provision of services on how that might work. But it could range from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. Um, the discussion you just had regarding the capital bu- uh budget was uh absolutely on point. And that we note that REIT or housing levy could help support this, especially for the capital expenditure. Um, additionally, we do have coronavirus provided CDBG, an additional million dollars coming into the city. And that might help us um get through uh at least the first year of the operational component of that. Um, the advantage on this one is very uh direct. It would provide additional capacity. It would most quickly, it is of all the tools we've got, it is the quickest way to get units on the ground and provide a remedy to our Martin V Boise limitations. As council is aware, um, without having capacity, um, we're not able to address um camping on public lands. Um, and moreover, it's really appropriate to have capacity and programs to move people through the system merit as uh more appropriate than just leaving them in place. So it is the one we recommend um as uh moving forward on. We have started to prepare an RFQ towards that end. Um, and we know we have two known entities with track records who would respond to this RFQ. The last measure was one the council previously directed us to issue an RFP for. Um, I should say that was issue, uh, that direction was early last year, and unfortunately, because of the COVID issue and our need to deal with deal with CARES Act and a variety of things that took primacy in our community, we didn't get to it. Um, we did issue it. Unfortunately, we did not receive any applications. Um, absent an operator, we can't make that happen. Um, we've uh, we did reach out to folks, we did inquire, we spoke to known providers, but none stepped forward. At this point, um, absent an operator coming forward for us to discuss uh instituting a program, we prefer focusing on achieving motel stays for families and seniors. We think that might be a better solution in the very near term and would give us greater capacity. So at this point, um, those are four approaches the council had discussed previously. Um, staff's recommendation is to focus uh very much in the near term on the RFQ for the tiny home village. Um, again, we don't have the mix yet of how to fund it, but with uh your direction, we would uh move to find a um approach that could provide a a full assurance of that being up in the shortest possible time. Um, we would be prepared to issue that RFQ uh RFQ um as soon as this week or early next Um, I know Samuel is here. Um, if Tara's joined, we're available to answer any questions he might have on this. Dan?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have.
Uh, sorry, Director Seppeler. Thank you for the report. I appreciate it. Uh, my question is in regards to the expanded motel state program. Do we have any certainty around um what that capacity looks like? And hotel or pardon me motel operators that are willing to be a part of that program? Do we do we know those things?
Samuel, do you do you have a response?
Yeah, I can step in on that one. Samuel Lutz of the Planning Department. Um, we have not gotten any indication that there are capacity limitations there. We've been meeting with uh partner agencies that provide this service. Um, and they have been able to find adequate places for folks to stay. Um, some of these are just scattered sites. Some um, the county is working with uh, one of the providers have some contracted motel rooms a year round for this youth. Um, there are funds that the that Waukum County has through the emergency solutions grant um that can be used for motel stays. So at this point, um, in addition to the city's motel contract with the Opportunity Council that is continuing this winter, um, we're we're holding back. Uh, there is some projection that there might still be a gap um in funds needed if we get an increase in demand. Um, but that gap would not be realized until uh a few months into twenty twenty-one. Uh, until we would have time to to revisit this, uh, depending on the demand for the program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Liliquis and actually, um, Mr. Seppeler, uh, would you mind sharing that um homeless solutions document with us? And if you could take that off Share Screen, please?
I absolutely will, and I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Liliquis and Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Um, continuing with that, by the way, I really appreciate this kind of micro discussion here at the end. Um, because a lot of my thinking on how to improve the budget centers on these areas. Um, you said that our staff's estimation is that there are plenty of dollars available for the family motel vouchers this coming winter, maybe a gap towards the end of the winter, and there's also block grant money available uh due to the coronavirus, uh special block grant monies that might be used for the uh tiny home village. I wasn't sure if that was capital operations. Are both of those, because the majority is, a lot of those motel money and this block grant money actually coming through the county rather than through the city? I think maybe it is, and so I'm I'm kind of I don't want to make plans for money that we're not in charge of just yet. But how much of that is actually coming through the county?
So Samuel Lutz again, the lion's share um of the COVID response funding for services is coming through the county uh with uh emergency solutions grant and a couple of other um commerce uh CARES um grants have come through the county. The city, um, we did put some of our jurisdictional CARES Act dollars um made available, and then the the largest share for us is just over one million dollars in a special CDBG allocation, a portion of which was included in our action plan um and a portion of which has yet has been announced, but has yet to come to us. Um, and those would not, those would be available for services, so they'd be uh available to use for um case management services and the like. Um, they could be used for capital, but CDBG funding comes with a lot of strings attached for capital, um, and so we often find the best use is on the services side.
Our vouchers, uh stay vouchers, services?
Um, so CDBG does have limitations when it comes to paying for housing. Um, they do not have a allowance for that. CDBG does allow emergency payments to households on a one-time basis for a very short term. And so there is some latitude in what those emergency payments can be used for. Um, they don't go directly to households. They would go towards things like deposit assistance or a motel stay directly. Um, and so we could work with an agency like the Opportunity Council to manage some of that, but they are um very strict in terms of duration and maximum amount.
Councilmember Anderson? And then Stone?
Thank you. I'll have two questions, but I'll ask the first one and then wait to be recognized for the second. Um, with the RFQ, I think that's what you called it. I always want to say RFP. Um, if that gets out later this week, latest next week, um, and it sounds like there may be a couple of entities that might work out how soon would be the estimate that um people would actually get sheltered? Um, is this something that could take because of having to get everything in place, agreements, the whole process? Are we talking about the beginning of December? Are we talking about March? Um, how fast will this solution, not solution, but this amenity towards providing some solutions um actually potentially be in place at the soonest?
So if I might respond, um, unfortunately, the even our fastest processes are take time. And we aren't looking for this to be on the ground until spring, late spring, probably. Um, remember, we have a public process for the permitting with it, um, mounting an application and then site improvements. Um, our interest is to get it as quickly as possible. But we can't gloss over the ability for community to respond um to a proposal and a proposed site.
I'm just gonna ask one quick question, then we'll go to Councilmember Stone. A follow-up to Michael and Samuel's conversation in regards to CDBG funds. Uh, could they be used at all in regards to the extension of the hot team, the second item on that proposal? Would they, do they not qualify for that at all?
Yes, uh, we currently use uh CDBG funds to help fund the homeless services um uh operations, and we could certainly uh fund hot team. We do frequently use CDBG funds to help um pay for the salaries of folks providing the services, case management or otherwise. And yes, that's an eligible expense.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Councilmember Vargas. Um, so yes, thank you, Director Seppeler, for bringing this forward. Um, a couple of thoughts, and maybe there's a question in there somewhere. Um, one is just expressing my disfavor for reallocating, you know, the funds, the levy funds. Um, I believe that those have been allocated towards projects that are critically important. Um, and so I would just discourage reallocation of those funds. Um, in addition, for the hot team, although I I see the, you know, the need in some level, I also support waiting for expansion of the hot team because I feel like the capacity and services shortage that we're facing has to be the priority. Um, and the hope is, is that maybe COVID dollars will be able to to help, but part of my concern is the motel stays, and I think it's outlined in your your spreadsheet, but the hotel stays aren't cheap. And they're not providing any solution long term, and it's becoming futile in some respects. And I I realize that the long-term solutions are expensive and that right now is, you know, a very difficult budget to try and balance, but I feel like this is of critical importance and not just because of Martin B. Boise and legal parameters and limitations. It's because it's the humane thing to do that we need to care for our most vulnerable. And so I really want to move, you know, I think it was the top, you know, tier as far as shelter discussions. I want to in some way move those discussions forward to action, and I believe that what's required is an investment in order to bring things to action. And so if there is any, you know, ability in the budget to, you know, make sure that these are a priority and that there's going to be funding in this biennium to move these projects forward. I really really want to try and garner that support from, you know, fellow council members and the mayor. I know that the, you know, the interest for support is there, but actually taking that next step to make those investments, I believe what ends up, you know, becoming difficult because there are competing interests. And like I believe Director Seppeler said earlier, we can't do it all. And because we can't do it all, I just want to again impress the importance of focusing on that capacity on the far end of the continuing of housing that we look at and really the shelter and immediate um care that's needed again for our most vulnerable. So I don't believe there was a question. I just wanted to express those comments. So thank you.
Councilmember Anderson and then Liliquis?
Thank you. Um, my second question first will be a statement then question. I do agree with uh Councilmember Stone as far as um what our levy is budgeted for. We really do need to try to spend as much money as we can from that levy to permanent solutions. And I know those permanent long-term solutions take time and they're more expensive. But I think about our investment into on the Sandwich Commons and how many housing units we're going to be seeing um within the next year to three years um is an incredible investment. I also understand why we're not in we partner for services. Um, I use Sandwich Commons as another example when a community member felt that we should be um building and uh staffing our own um centers is that we were able to take a five million dollar investment and seed into an eighty million dollar project for the Sandwich um Commons because nonprofits have the ability to go for grants and other resources that we as a city would not have. But with that said, um, I was really hoping somebody would come forward for safe parking because it is needed. And um, and obviously, that may not be something that we're able to um provide community members. But my primary concern is that as we invest in things that are long-term, we do have a short-term uh imminent need now. Um, I'm an old farmer's almanac person. I mean, I buy it, I read it, gardener, and you know, there's indications that this is not going to be a mild winter. And, you know, my concern is, is that if we dip below freezing and we have snow on the ground for a week or two weeks, and there is no shelter capacity for individuals to be able to walk in and warm up and stay safe, we're going to have um issues that we as a city should be preventing. So, and I've asked this before, but what is our plan for a drop-in, walk-in, warming shelter that the city is going to provide if we do not have any shelter capacity through the Lighthouse Mission? Um, we received an email from an individual who had interacted with a homeless youth on the weekend, and the Lighthouse Mission, according to this individual's statement, Lighthouse Mission does not um intake anybody under eighteen. And then Northwest Youth Services wasn't available because it was after hours and they were at capacity. And so this community member, according to their words, had to basically leave this youth to wander and try to find a place to go inside and get warm. That is not acceptable by any means. One, that there was not some way whether to connect that individual to emergency shelter, to a hotel. Um, you know, we are going to have things fall through the cracks, but we as a city, you know, it, we've got probably no time um to maybe a month before that weather is a concern. And I know about three years ago when this was a big issue and the county and city really went back and forth. Um, I believe the county had opened up one of their their buildings next to the um the city hall so that it could be an emergency drop-in um warming shelter for individuals. And it was staffed with county and city staff and volunteers. I know we have COVID and spaces an issue, but if we are not seriously coming up with a plan um to have an emergency backup in the worst-case scenario of weather, um, then we need to. So, um, has any thought been put into this? And if not, when can something be brought forward? Or do I need to do a resolution in order to put that up to vote to have that happen?
If I might respond, um, the uh the provision of the cold-weather shelters falls to the county. And as as you're aware, the county is a lead agency for uh unsheltered services. They've taken that on because, as I understand it, we've sort of divided the pie up. Um, the city has been pursuing through base camp with partnership with the county and perhaps this additional facility. Um, we're providing for the low barrier and more moderate needs for folks. We're partnering with other agencies for families. Um, our role is to do what's proposed. The county has been um pursuing those cold-weather shelters. Um, to be fair, it is not at this point a very satisfying answer in the sense that um the volunteers needed to staff those shelters during severe weather um are pretty tapped out because they're accommodating other facilities. So we'll keep you posted on that. It is a significant concern for our whole community. Um, and it's one where um we need to rely on, at this point, on the good offices of the Health Department to advance solutions on a county-wide basis. I should note, um, in a recent meeting with the uh the small cities and the county executive in our mayor, um, it was asked of some of the smaller mayors how they're handling the influx of those who are unsheltered. And their answer is we send them to Bellingham. So essentially, we're picking up a county role. We'd look for the county to pick up a role. We shouldn't let jurisdictional issues, however, prevent people from being served.
Councilmember Liliquis and Stone?
So I'd like to provide some like feedback to some of the kind of issues or questions that were raised. Uh, one issue is should we reallocate housing fund dollars? I completely agree with uh Councilmember Stone, and I think maybe Anderson also said it. No, we we allocated those funds for good long-term purposes. Uh, I'm not going to suggest we rob Peter to pay Paul. We're just going to take one step forward and one step back. Makes no sense to me. We need to find other ways of funding, which is why I turned towards REIT. And um, as much as I'd like to use that block grant money for uh some shelters, as was indicated, that's under the county's control, and I I'm not going to start counting those eggs because I can't control, you know, who lays them and where and whether they'll hatch. Sorry for the metaphor. Um, so no, I don't want to reallocate housing fund dollars. We can, we can leave those awards alone, in my opinion. Um, I will disagree with Councilmember Stone on on her agreement with staff that maybe now's not the time to expand a hot team, as staff points out. Expanding the hot team may not make that much sense if the hot team can't make referrals to services because the services aren't available during the extended hours. Um, two things there. I wouldn't look just to the weekend, but also to extended hours later into the evening, earlier in the morning. Um, you know, so I I think there are benefits of extending the hot team anyway. And also, we're making a two-year decision. I sure as heck hope we've expanded the available services within those two years, and I need to make a budget recommendation and request now for expanded hot team service. I want to put the budget capability in now to expand the hot team, even though as of this moment, we don't have the facilities. I think we need to move forward on all fronts at once and not wait for one front to move forward to move the other fronts. We should move all of them at once. So I would like to move forward on expanding our shelter capacity and move forward on expanding our outreach capacity, both of them at the same time. So the one without the other doesn't make sense. That's why I want to advance both. With regard to the RFQ going out maybe this week, I entirely and a hundred percent support it. I'd like to understand, um, whether there's a budget line for that, or if that's one of those things which we will have to then come back and make a budget line. If we issue the RFQ, if we have a taker, if we have a contract, do we need a budget amendment? And if so, I'd kind of like to put it in the budget now. Um, it may not be spent in six months, it may be spent in two, it may not be spent in a year. I want to put it in the budget now. Again, I'm making a two-year plan. And I want to make that commitment in the budget, treat the space in the budget here in November and in December rather than wait until March uh when the details are worked out. And along those lines, um, as much as I appreciate and support the idea of an RFQ for tiny homes, I'd like to also dip into those REIT funds. And again, propose a budget amendment for additional transitional housing um programs. And tiny homes can be traditional housing, but they're not always the best model transitional housing, particularly maybe for families with children. Uh, um, so I would like to look at using those REIT funds and whatever else for the operational aspect um for another RFP RFQ process for transitional housing. And to do that, I would look to the county's homeless strategies work group and say that we will give preference to transitional housing, which addresses um at-risk populations, special populations which are not well-served in the current uh general congregate model, which the Lighthouse Mission is using. Uh, elderly, medically fragile, um uh non-typical families, non-typical gender identities. There's a whole There's a whole host of population which are not well or ideally served. For that matter, just people who have been traumatized, PTSD, DV survivors, who again, don't do well in a congregate facility where everyone is allowed and is in the facility together. So I want to move both of those forward. And I, if necessary, and this is what I'm going to be trying to be bringing forward and I hope to find support. Budget amendments now to start laying the financial groundwork for those expanded shelter facilities. And I want the budget now and the hot team in the budget now. And I don't know which one's going to hit first, but I want them both there so that when one goes forward, the others also going forward. So those are my, my thoughts. I really appreciate this entire discussion. And Mr. Sepler for bringing forward those four items with regard to safe parking. We tried, so let's move on to something else.
Councilmember Stone and then Anderson.
Thank you, Councilmember Vargas. So my point actually follows up, I guess, on Michael's last comment or Councilmember Liliquis' last comment. I have a question about the RFPs because I'm not satisfied actually that, I believe we need safe parking and I understand that we need an operator and I understand that the city can't take that on. But my question with respect to RFPs is how broad is that net or functionally how that, that works? I'm just wondering what more the city can do to try and reach out to identify potential operators?
If I might respond to that, it's in our interest. We, we've, we do outreach typically before we issue them. We try to engender interest in potential providers. As you might recall, for safe parking, we reached out to the religious community previously. We did that again. We also reached out to what we thought were potential partners who provided it elsewhere, a couple of them. However, their interest was in another direction than that program. I should say that it seems easy for some to say we should just hire staff. It would take us six months, even if we had funding to hire someone with the expertise to run a program, let alone mount the manpower needed to do it. Absent that, there are highly problematic uses when you assemble a place where people can, can park without any sort of general supervision, check-in and resolving issues. In terms of the RFQ, we did speak to two different organizations. We're going to speak with the third. In those cases, all of them have experience providing this type of facility in other communities. And we're inviting them to apply. So we've done outreach and we advertise it broadly. It's been on the landing page of our website. We've made every effort we can to get the message out there. This is a very specialized area for a group who wishes to step forward. And it would require in many cases, coming to a new market where they don't have staff on the ground. But we'll keep trying. I should, if I could, the difference between RFP and RFQ. In terms of the tiny house, village or temporary encampment, it could be an all-weather tent for that matter. We did an RFQ because we want qualifications and then we'll negotiate based on what they can provide in the sites we have available. An RFP typically says, you know, you need to come forward with a site and your proposal and tell us how much you think it would cost. So we're trying to get to the point of being more responsive to the applicants and the scale of what they could provide.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that my concern is in no way to be admonishing the city for their efforts. I commend our planning department and a lot of our city departments for the work that you are doing towards homeless. It has definitely been a full-time job for several. I do hope that the mayor's office and perhaps planning is in communication with the county regarding a, you know, drop-in warming shelter, drop-in emergency during the inclement weather. And as soon as you get some type of plan or outline or trigger or location, how this is going to work. Can you please bring that back to city council so that everybody is informed what the process will be? And we can get that information to the community? And please let us know as a council if we need to be, you know, knocking on people's doors too, in order to make that effort. I don't want to step on toes, but if there's anything we can do to get this process in front of us soon. So we know what it looks like, please let us know. But I will be probably asking at the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting. So it will be put on replay. So hopefully we'll hear something from the county soon. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any additional questions for Director Sepler? Go ahead, Mr. Sepler.
If I might, if there are no additional questions, we would like direction from council. We'd like to know if there's concurrence, certainly on the RFQ, proceeding with the RFQ and developing that program. And I'm seeing broad support on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Director Sepler. We appreciate that. Obviously, as everyone is aware, there's been a lot of community interest in how we can make sure that everyone is sheltered this winter. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Mayor Fleetwood. He has some additional comments as well.
Just a follow-up. First off, Councilmember Anderson, as it relates to your observations about working with the county and providing you some information about winter shelter and places where people can go to warm up. I will be getting back to you in that regard and give you an update. Concerning Michael, as it relates to the hot team, as you know, and I mentioned this, should the majority of the council sort of agree with the notion that hot team expansion without corresponding increase in capacity is potentially problematic? I'm wondering, and given our interest in expanding capacity in the nearer term, I'm wondering if you would at least be open to considering the idea of looking at hot team funding in year two of this biennial budget. As you know, we're going to have a very robust midterm consideration of budget this year because there's so much uncertainty. I just want to present that idea and we can discuss that at another time. And also, if I could, to seize this moment, I think a lot of us have heard about the idea of trying to expand capacity at the Byron Street Isolation Quarantine Facility. And that sort of emerged in the last several days. I just wanted to report that that's something that has been, that we've been looking at rather actively in the last couple of weeks. And we, initially there was concern because the contract between the county and the owner had a contractual provision that didn't permit any homeless-related use of that facility. In negotiations, they've agreed to grant 15 units for homeless purposes. And the, the, the effort right now is trying to find some assistance with managing that facility. And we'll be putting out some communications as it relates to the status of that. But that's good news because that poses the prospect of increase in 15 units for increased capacity for this winter. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you. Back to you, Pinky.
Councilmember Stone.
So I just had a question since we are convened today and tomorrow is Election Day. And I saw that Chief Doll is on the call. I noticed that Chief Hewitt is, is not. And I understand that Chief Hewitt's filling in for Lynn Servans as emergency manager. And not to put Chief Doll on the spot, but I'm just curious if there's anything that can be said to the community with respect to preparations or anticipation for Election Day? I know that anxieties are high and just, if there's anything that can be shared to let people know sort of what actions being taken or what preparations are being made, I would be appreciative.
I can. I'm David Doll. I'm your police chief. Number one, I hope you all have voted. So please vote. We are monitoring events that are happening both locally, regionally and throughout the country. We will have in collaboration with our county partners, teams available to respond if need be. And that's going to be through the weekend. So we're monitoring things right now. We don't have any actionable intelligence that anything is happening or, or anything to be concerned of at the moment, but we are going to be watching. So we will have teams that we can deploy if need be.
Thank you very much, Chief Doll. Anyone else? Anything before, for the good of the order for today? Okay, it looks like we're clear. Thank you everyone so much. And this concludes our fifth budget meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Till next time. Bye.